Our Palmdale City Council meeting. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please rise. We're gonna do a pledge of allegiance and I'd like to ask a little woman to silence afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Good item three is a roll call, please.
Mayor Ledford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Corio?
I'm here.
Councilmember Hoffauer?
Here.
Bettencourt?
Here.
Bishop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I was gonna ask that we can adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of the emperor?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Alright ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start off our meeting. We have a representative from our animal care center gonna bring up a dog that you could adopt. Now, in case you didn't know, you know in the city of Palmdale you can have up to four dogs and up to five cats. Opportunity to expand your tribe. Yeah, it's a big time opportunity. Welcome. Good to see you. Very good.
Hello, everybody. Gotta have Summer with me, Summer is a one-year-old German Shepherd. She became homeless today. Came to the shelter as an owner surrender. She's really quite good with children.
Thank you Drew.
She's quite good with children and she is house-trained. She's very good on leash, except she just ate mine. I've been playing with her since I got to the shelter today. Trying to see how she reacted and everything and she plays fetch very well. She loves to bring it back to you and play a little tug-of-war and then she'll release, which is unusual for shepherds because they like to play tug-of-war. But, uh, she's a year old. Like I said, she is house-trained and she's very good on leash. She, uh, likes to be very active. She'll lay down here for a bit and then she'll start whining because she wants to do something else. They say she's not good with other animals, but at the shelter, walking her past other dogs, they reacted and she didn't. In fact, I had her on my right side and she came over on my left as we walked through the shelter. You know, so, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna say anything about the previous owners, but I think she was given up because their dog didn't get along with her. You know, and that's unfortunate for her. But she's a very sweet dog and she is lovable. She likes to give kisses to and hugs. But she's available now, since she's an owner surrender, she's had, she's been altered. She's had her shots, uh, and she's had her chip implanted.
German shepherds are great dogs. Smart, great around the family, around kids.
Yes. Great for home protection.
Great for home protection. You know, we have a success story. At our last meeting, we had Ranger. Ranger got adopted at the poppy festival.
Yes.
So, that was a good move.
We won before that. Was that adopted then?
Yeah, we won before that. We got adopted at the meeting.
Yep. A lab mix that got adopted from here too.
So, we're on a streak. So, who wants to step up to maintain the streak? JJ, you're new.
I need a house.
Oh, you need a house, okay. Anyway, we got a good relationship with our, with our shelter here. We're really engaging the community. We're trying to build that volunteer support and create an environment where, you know, you look to a dog in the shelter, maybe before you go out and spend real big bucks on a dog. You have great animals right here that we could, we could save. And for great family members.
Oh, yeah.
So, were we forgetting anything? What's your name?
My name is Jesse.
Jesse's a volunteer and you too could be a volunteer out at the shelter as well. So, these are all opportunities.
I've been volunteer for five years now and enjoy every minute of it. Especially with guys like this.
Yeah. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Alright. Well, we got some 20-year employees we're gonna recognize. Can we bring up Kathleen Whiteside? Alright Kathleen. Well, it says here, "In recognition and appreciation of 20 years of diligent work, service, and commitment to ensure a high quality of life for the residents of the city of Palmdale." So Kathleen, where'd you start?
I worked every gamut. I started on graveyard.
On graveyard?
When we actually had graveyard, ten to six. My kids never knew I was out of the house. It was great when they were eighty, eighty, because they didn't know. Mom was still there for breakfast, dinner, homework. Yeah.
They're on to you now. Well, we wanna present this because you do a fabulous job. Kathleen's out at the airpark now. If you haven't had a chance to get out to the airpark, but that's one of her tasks and you do a fabulous work out there.
Thank you.
We sure appreciate you.
I appreciate you.
Yeah. You wanna say anything?
No, it's been great. I went from graveyard into the park system and then I spent many years in streets before following the airpark over into recreation and culture. I spent eighteen years in public works. It was a great experience.
She's not done yet either.
I'm not done yet. I got plans for that airpark. Everybody knows it. Thank you.
Good job. You got one more to serve. Alright. Kathleen, good job. And Bruce Roadhouse, come on up. You know, you've been around for twenty years.
Yes.
You get to be well-known.
Yes.
Fabulous, fabulous work. Bruce, we certainly appreciate you and this is just a little something for us to be able to say that we recognize and appreciate your twenty years of diligent work, service, and commitment to ensure the high quality of life for our residents of Palmdale. That doesn't really speak to, well, like you and Kathleen both. These are employees with passion and really get into what they do and they do excellent, excellent work. You've done exactly that for us Bruce.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's for you. Any words of wisdom?
Just so everybody knows, I've, uh, I've grown up in this valley. I graduated Palmdale High School back in 1986. Well, Falcons. Just very happy to give back to the community and my coworkers and the council. I appreciate all the support that they've given me over the last year with some personal issues I've had and I thank you all very, very much. And I'm just tickled pink to be back at work and serving this, this community. So, thank you.
You do great work. Thank you. Bruce Roadhouse. Trish Jones. Oh, this isn't for you. No, we wanna recognize the Knight High Digital Design and Engineering Academy. Who is here representing the academies?
Come on.
Come on down. Israel and Marlene. Marlene and Israel. Trish?
Uh, we have been working on the Master Art Plan for the last few months and, um, when the consultants came to us and spoke to us about doing innovative outreach to the community, they wanted to engage community partners and they contacted an artist, Nicholas Rodriguez, who went and met with the amazing, amazing students at the Digital Design Academy. And, um, they came up with a very innovative, interactive way to engage the community and get their feedback on art. And what these kids did with the artist was just phenomenal and got us a ton of outstanding information for our Master Art Plan.
Thank you. Any words of wisdom?
Speak freely.
Try the mic, okay. She's gonna help us.
I hope to say on behalf of me and Marlene, since we're the only two each other. There's a larger group of us together. Yeah, it was very fun to be a part of this and, um, I'd like to say thank you for, you know, bringing this opportunity to us. And it was really fun to interact with the community and just get a lot of feedback. So, we hope to see some great things in our business.
I'm sure we will. Again, this says Knight High School Digital Design and Engineering Academy. This is in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the citizen engagement component of the Master Art Plan. The city of Palmdale would like to thank you for making a difference in our community. And I gotta say, ladies and gentlemen, we got great young people here in the Antelope Valley. They are on it and they are leading. Let's get a picture. Very good.
Get you your camera.
Good job. Take care.
Thank you.
You got more?
I got more. Are they ready? Carrie, are they coming in?
Well, maybe you'll set us up.
So, we all know how we feel about our volunteers here in the city of Palmdale and we love them and we were looking for innovative ways to engage. And Jennifer Tolleson, who is escorting our special guests in tonight, we started talking about Yellin Park. And this is National Dog Park Appreciation Month. Who knew? And when we looked at volunteers for the park, it didn't make sense to get a bunch of humans out there. So, we are going to introduce our very first canine volunteers here in the city. And I think they're making their way up the stairs. We wanted to wait until summer left. But the idea behind this is, um, they will be our ambassadors out at the dog park. They, um, you'll see when they come in, they are wearing specially-marked vests and they will be the people out there at the dog park engaging with the visitors, talking about the dog park and, um, helping to expand its usage in the years to come. And I'm seeing cameras, so that means they're coming.
Here they come.
So, I would like to introduce to you Ambassador Charlie, Ambassador Roxy, Ambassador Augie, and Ambassador Turd.
Alright, Turd. Oh, look at that. Very good.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jennifer Tolleson. I'm a recreation supervisor with Rep and Culture. Um, we're excited to launch our new patrol. Uh, these dogs are going to be our ambassadors. I don't know how much to share at this point.
A little bit.
Okay. So, these dogs are gonna be our ambassadors out at the dog park. Um, these folks right here have been regular users since we opened the dog park about a year ago. We're celebrating our one-year anniversary actually on June 1st. So, can't believe it's already been a year. It's pretty exciting. So, um, so we're gonna launch the program, see how it goes throughout the summer and revisit it at the end of summer. Hopefully, you have some new recruits. Um, but yeah, these guys are out here to, oh, excuse me, I'm out of breath. Wrangling dogs. Um, these guys are gonna be out there helping us promote our programs at the dog park. They may have heard of Yappy Hour. That's something that we're gonna continue to do on a monthly basis. Our ambassadors will help us with that. Um, hopefully, you'll see these, um, our patrol out at some of our summer events, including Music in the Parks, um, as well as National Night Out. Uh, they may have a booth. We're working on that. So, um, hopefully, you'll see them out and about and they can help answer questions about the dog park, the dog park rules, hours, um, events coming up. But, um, we're really looking forward to it. It should be a fun, fun adventure with these guys. So, thank you to the volunteers and their dogs for helping us launch this.
So, in case you haven't noticed, Palmdale is a critter-centric community. But we have an opportunity to do more. So, I invite anybody that has an interest to do more, there's a place for you. So, consider it. That's it?
Yep.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Here we go.
Somebody's shy.
Okay. Moving right along, item five on our agenda, waiver of full reading resolutions and ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? It's a order. Item six is our consent calendar. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have actually 25 items on the consent calendar. This would be the audience, you and the audience, an opportunity. If you had an item on the consent calendar, you would like us to consider pulling for further discussion. And the reason for that is consent calendar typically routine items, non-controversial items. It could be enacted the entire 25 items with a motion and a second. However, we have an opportunity for the audience to weigh in if you'd like and certain of the council have an opportunity to weigh in. Anybody from the audience have an interest in a consent calendar item? Which would be seven on your agenda, seven through one through 25. Alright, see and none? City Council? Anybody have an item they'd like us to pull for consideration?
Yes, I'd like us to pull 7.3, 711 and 12, 721 and 724. And I move, if nobody else has anything additional.
Uh, 7.8 for me.
7.8.
7.10, 7.14.
Any other items? How about a motion to adopt the consent calendar minus what we're pulling?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? How do we do this? Voice vote or?
Yes. So, Ledford?
Yes.
Corio?
Yes.
Hoffauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Alright, let's go to item 7.3.
I, uh, purpose of pulling this one is, is that I just want the public to know that, I know our staff works really, really hard to get the, um, the local businesses involved and, uh, we had three locals that, but their bids were considerably higher. I'm, I'm trying to comprehend that because the difference in the bids were the, as much as one or one and a half more vehicles there. Can, can you, do you guys have any thoughts on how we can help our, our local guys be more competitive where you don't have to go out to Covina or West Nowhere Someplace for this stuff?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Matt Harris to come up and speak on that. He's been, um, spending a lot of time trying to get the local vendors involved. So, uh, he may have some input on it. We, we have, like you said, put in a tremendous amount of effort to get ven, local vendors involved and we are seeing improvements on that. But in this case, like you said, it's still not within that local preference.
I mean, they weren't even close.
They were not close. Matt?
Yeah, you know, like, uh, as Karen mentioned, uh, about a couple of months ago, we did meet with the local dealerships. We, you know, instructed them on how to register as a vendor of the city of Palmdale, how to participate in the bid process and we walked them through the entire process. So, it was really encouraging to see that we had three local vendors did participate. Um, you know, at the end of the day, um, you know, there's the lowest price. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty to understand the difference in price.
Alright, were, on their, on their bids, um, was there a substantial difference in the vehicles that they were, that they were off, that they were bringing in as part of their bid? I mean, were they bringing in the deluxe versions when that's not what we were looking for? What did you see that was, was there anything that you saw that in the future? Because we're all gonna hear from these guys at some point or another here that, you know, how come we didn't?
Yeah, to better answer your question, so in the past, uh, we would pre-select the vehicle we liked to go with. Before, or, you know, before dealership of Palmdale, we have one like Ask Here. So, you know, narrowing, narrowing down the minimum specs of the vehicles that we need to be where it's drawn on a day-to-day basis was a starting point.
Right.
That was an even claim field for all our dealerships. So, you know, we needed a 2.3-liter engine, uh, we needed a four-door sedan, ISB white, you know, these basic specs. From there, you know, that allowed all the dealerships to participate that sell sedans for this bid. In regards to, from there, the dealerships did, um, submit bids for different type of vehicles, uh, which has a factor in the pricing. So, instead of going for that base model price we're looking for, you know, some of them did add in additional features that we weren't requesting.
Okay. Alright, 'cause just real quick, Matt, the difference between, between the, the first bid came out to about 15 grand a car, the next bid was 18 grand more. You know, sounds a little car, you know, so, you know, I, okay, well, I don't know if they just weren't, weren't reading right or what.
Yeah, the question, tell them how these guys come in so much slower.
Yeah.
Well, you know, with US leaving, uh, the lowest bid, uh, they were the same exact vehicle that was bid from early on. So, they're the same base model. I can't answer. I'm not sure if US has a larger, larger volume of sales through different discounts on the back end. But they were the exact same vehicles.
Okay. I appreciate your efforts, Matt.
Yeah, we definitely are looking for any avenue to get local participation and we'll continue to do so. Prior to the bid, I made sure that the local vendors knew that the bid was coming.
All these guys participate in a pre-bid meeting, so they understood the specs?
Uh, we, we notified them prior to the bid and released, yeah. We didn't go into the specs just because of, um, you know, being transparent.
Right.
We definitely let them know this coming, so they're aware to meet for it, uh, which increased, you know.
Sometimes a pre-bid meeting can help on those things too, so.
It might be something we can consider to them if you're, if you're moving.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts on that. I move to approve the item.
Just to add to that process we have, um, we, uh, we have Exhibit A that, uh, includes the specs of all the vehicles and they're all pretty much standard. Uh, and when we send out, we make extra effort to reach out to local vendors. By calling them, sometimes we actually make a visit and we make sure, uh, local vendors receive the bids. So, we make a really tremendous effort to reach out to local vendors and making sure they are actually aware of the bid. And also, all the details, uh, that goes into the specs, uh, we make sure they're all standard. They are able to meet the standard. So, um, yeah, definitely it came as a surprise, yes.
Alright, any other questions from the council? We have a motion?
Second on motion.
And a second? Any other discussion? Just have a roll call vote, please.
Ledford?
Yes.
Corio?
Yes.
Hoffauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Alright, let's go to 7.8.
The reason I requested to pull that item is not because I'm in opposition of releasing the RFP. That is something that we've been working, assessing work in our team. In getting the RFP and, uh, the updating of the general plan. During the briefing this afternoon, I raised some concerns that I had with the way that the committees would be formed and the application and the, uh, the elements in the general plan. I just wanted to thank staff for including the social justice element and environmental justice element that I brought up during the discussion that we got up to do a workshop. I just wanted to make sure and put it on the record that I want to make sure that the environmental justice and social justice elements are addressed fully. See inside the field that those are the important elements to have in our new general plan. The equity throughout the city is another issue that I talked about during the briefing. Uh, and the committee that is gonna be formed might be eight or nine members. Uh, and that's something that, uh, I think we can discuss further as the city committee will be formed. And that has not part of the item that is here tonight. But during the conversation, it was suggested that we do a workshop on the social justice element, the full meaning of what it is, especially for me because of the differences that I see throughout the city. I just want to make sure that that is addressed and to have a better understanding of what social equity means. Maybe a workshop was suggested in the near future. And again, those are just the reasons that I wanted to go decide. Is there any other discussion from the council?
One question that I would have on the workshop, would you want that to be once we've selected a consultant? And so they can weigh in on that or do you want it before we?
It was suggested that after the consultant is selected, so that we can get the input from the consultant. Uh, the other thing is the economic development, economic element. Uh, in the extension of the RFP, it is indicated that it's up to the consultant to make a recommendation as to whether the economic development element should be its own element by itself or if it should be carried throughout the rest of the elements. Uh, I did say that I would prefer that to be its own element, but this is an exception. I agree with the reasoning, maybe it's a better idea to have it throughout the entire general plan, throughout the whole, of the elements. That, I, I could agree with that, but I just think that having the economic development element by itself would serve a better purpose for the city because this is the opportunity that we have to address what the new general plan would look like in the future development of the entire city. Again, those are the reasons why I wanted to pull this item. If there's no more discussion from the council, I make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
Uh, I agree. I think the economic portion of our, our general plan update's gonna be yours and something that we're definitely gonna wanna keep our eyes on.
Right, agreed.
I think though that each piece of it plays into it, so I think that, uh, there's a, there's a valid basis for both of those. I think it'll end up flushing itself out here soon enough.
Yeah, I'd agree. Alright, we got a motion, a second?
Ledford?
Yes.
Corio?
Yes.
Hoffauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Alright, let's go to item 7.10. This is for the?
Yellin Park.
Yellin Park. Side improvements.
In our sub-completion, I meant to, uh, pull seven in there.
Okay, alright, okay. Move to approve, 710?
Second.
Got a motion, second? Vote?
Ledford?
Yes.
Corio?
Yes.
Hoffauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Alright, let's go to item 711.
Do you wanna go first, Mr. Hoffauer? Uh, I just wanted to thank staff for working on this shade structures on Yellin Park. As you know, that's something that I've been talking about. And I'm happy to see that we're gonna be able to make some improvement on Phase One of Yellin Park. see that we're gonna be able to make, uh, some improvement on, uh, Phase 1 of Yellen Park.
711.
711? How about a motion? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion to move it? Second? Any other discussion?
No.
How about a vote?
Ledford?
Yes.
Correo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, let's move to item 712.
So, um, the, the, this is a, this is grant funding, so 711 is not actually budgeted? It's contingent upon 712, or?
That's correct. So 711 gives media authority, once we have the grant funds in hand, to issue the purchase order. And the idea there was that once we hear from the county that the last step in this is for the board to take an action to approve the grant funds, then we would be able to trigger the PO right away rather than waiting for the next meeting. Uh, that way we will have a better chance of getting those shade structures up while it's still summer.
Okay, and then I noticed that there's, uh, some ADA compliance, uh, playground equipment. So one of the things that, that we brought back a number of times is the problem with the proximity of the way the tot lot, the skate park, and basketball court are laid out over at Recur, and I, I just don't understand why we would sit here and upgrade the tot lot there without relocating it, have, taking us as the opportunity to put it in a spot where that interface problem, um, doesn't occur and allow there to be a buffer between the basketball court and the skate park, because you got basically four different distinct age groups using those three facilities over there, and they are not mutually compatible with one another. So it just seems like it's, it's like we're, we're just throwing good money into doing this ADA upgrade instead of just, okay, we're gonna take this down and we're gonna put this, we're spending about a million bucks to move a, a basketball court over at Missouri, but we can't get this, uh, this tot lot located where it's, um, it, it, where the, where the parents aren't, uh, reluctant to use it during certain periods of the day. So I think this would be a good time to, that we find that better spot for it there.
We can start looking at that design on, on Recur. Uh, the amount of funding for the, uh, ADA structures, if the contract was gonna be as with 711, uh, but it lacked some signatures and so we didn't bring that as forward as well. It's a small amount of money, it's really an ADA compliance issue, and we're starting to get complaints from parents and so forth to make sure that we have fully accessible playground structures. Uh, these are three of the parks that, uh, where we've gotten complaints, and so we do need to act on that. Uh, we were able to get a commitment of grant funds for it, and it'll be able to be moved along with the playground, you know, with the tot lot area, playground area, um, when we make any changes.
And get the money to move it.
And get the money to move it is critical.
So, good point. It's not money wasted.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
Second?
Got a motion, a second? Any other discussion? How about a vote, please?
Ledford?
Yes.
Correo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, let's go to item 714.
I pulled that item, uh, came just to take an opportunity to thank staff for working on these improvements on the east side. A lot of good things are happening, improvements in, uh, our place to park, uh, and this is just a good example of the collaboration with the city and the county. As I was explaining, the county's looking at doing, uh, the improvements on the north side of Palmdale Boulevard between 60th and 75th, so this is an opportunity for the city and the county to actually collaborate and, uh, get improvements on Palmdale Boulevard, uh, between 60th and 70, a much-needed resurfacing or repainting of that section of Palmdale Boulevard. Uh, again, just a kind of opportunity to thank staff for working so diligently on these improvements. If there's no discussion, I would make a motion.
Well, I, I just wanna say, in our budget workshop, we saw that a large portion of our budget went to our, our streets and roads, and you cannot appreciate how high the quality is of our roads here until you leave our city and go somewhere else, and then you really will appreciate the quality of our roads here. So every time we have an opportunity to work collaboratively with, um, the county or any other institute to improve our roads, I, I'm glad they were taking this opportunity.
Good point. All right. How about a motion?
I made a motion.
I think he made the motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? Any other discussion? Let's do a vote.
Ledford?
Yes.
Correo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, let's go to item 7.21.
Did you pull 7.20?
Did you pull 20?
Yes.
All right. 7.20.
This item, um, I've been doing a lot of research, uh, called this, got initiated, and staff's been providing me with the information that I've requested, um, but I just have some doubts of the way that this money has been utilized. I, I may be wrong, um, and this staff has been trying to set up an appointment or a meeting, uh, with a, a well-known person about, um, these, uh, bonds for part maintenance and part, uh, construction. Um, I thank staff for trying to set that up. Um, I think that, uh, I still need to get more time to feel confident about voting on this item. Um, again, I still need to take some more time and, uh, see if this is the right way that this has been done, uh, since the measure ballot in 2002 was approved. I've been looking at documents from, uh, 2010 through today, and I still have some more time to look into it. I just wanted to put that on, out there for you guys to know, and if you want to discuss it at a later point, uh, maybe I'd, I'd like to suggest a meeting, maybe in a closed session item, so that we can all discuss it, uh, and be on the same page as to why I feel that, uh, we have to look at this closely.
Okay.
Is there any fiscal impact if we postpone this item?
If this item's postponed, it will not make its assessment rolls for the county, uh, which means it will not go on, uh, next year's taxes, not only the increase, but, uh, even the assessment itself.
I think, I think we need to approve it, but I think we need to continue to have some discussion on, uh, the way it's going, and we got, we got a park for 25 years, we've been waiting to get a park built, and we've been watching another park jump ahead of it, uh, and, you know, people are questioning that significantly. So, um, I think that we should go ahead and do this. I agree with you, sir, that we, we really need to sit down and just make sure that we all have a better understanding of how this has been implemented, how it's currently being operated, and what we are looking at in the future. So, uh, with that understanding, I move to approve the item.
Okay, we got a motion? And a second? You second it.
Anybody yet? We need to get this thing on the rolls.
I'll second it. So we have a motion, second? Any other discussion? I think it's important to get it on the tax rolls, we don't want to lose that, then we're in trouble. All right, got a motion, second? Any other discussion? You want to call for the question?
Ledford?
Yes.
Correo?
No.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
It's, um, four yes votes, one no. Correo?
All right, moving on, we have now item 724, I believe.
21, 20.
21, 20?
Yes, sir.
All right, 721.
Okay, so Chuck, I'm gonna pull this every time, so, and you know that, and I warned you about it.
Right.
Um, you know, here's the, where, um, I, I see, I, I see the, the, um, the numbers and I see the increases going up, and many of these districts are, are maxed out right now on their, uh, numbers, other than the CPI, uh, numbers that, that go into this. But I, I hear like from the contractors, um, that, uh, and, and from staff, I've heard, well, over half that cost is in water, but we've turned the water down 70%. And in many of these districts, they've literally torn out over half of the landscaping, uh, that's there. There's a lot of these, uh, LMDs. Uh, I had a guy send me a picture, uh, a couple of pictures and say, pick the one that's the landscape district that was voted in, and it was difficult sometimes. Now, I know that you guys, and, and you personally, have been on the LMD crews, because I see them out there now with lists, you know, working on stuff, and they've got a prioritized list, I know they're getting checked on now, but I just think that with this thing, you know, they keep going up, I just think we need to stay diligent about this, and as Mr. Correo had pointed out with the, with the park thing, we really need to hold these guys accountable for what's going on in some of those districts, because you can go through and, uh, at, I would say, over half of the voted-in districts don't look like they're voted-in district. They just really look poor, so, um.
Steve, I think that that was addressed during our budget meeting, when we discussed the additional staff, uh, so that we had some staff to monitor, uh, these contracts.
Yeah.
So I don't think that this will be an issue in the future.
And I think it also speaks to this, uh, this pride effort that I, I think our community's ready for, and landscaping plays a big role in that, and I think we gotta build confidence that it's being, it's being monitored.
I, I am telling you, I, I can see some differences, and I know you guys, because these guys are out there with their list, you know, and I'm watching them out there and, and they're coming, you know, you know there's a grumpy guy in the backs up the Bull's Ranch Road that keeps an eye on him, and my neighbor too, so.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you that over the last two months that I've spent, uh, I've spent a lot of time with landscape maintenance folks, and actually, the guys are out there doing the work, and with Bruce and with Cheryl, and going through, and with Damon, working through this, and I can tell you that I know that the city manager spent a lot of time with previous director and the previous director before that, really looking at this, and, and there is an ongoing audit of these, um, so I'm looking, I'm really looking at this carefully with staff and with the city manager, and I think it will absolutely get better. I can tell you that just as part of the research, I looked back at the previous presentation you had on this issue, and, uh, previous director of Public Works talked about it, the landscaping was reaching its maturity and looking, you know, it was starting to get kind of aged, you know, it was getting to that age where it needed to be replaced. So we are going through the, the districts, there are some districts you can walk, you can drive around town, and you can see they've had renovations, there's been time spent by staff and by the contractor, uh, even, I think, some CIP projects, that, they look great. So it's gonna take time, we're gonna start working through the districts over a period of time, and yes, they will start to look better, uh, and absolutely, the, you know, holding, you know, holding people responsible for meeting their contract obligations is something we will do.
The hilarious, the hilarious one was the guy that was telling me about how all these problems are caused by the previous contractor. Well, after about 20 minutes of him showing me all the, the issues going on there, he reveals that he used to be the supervisor for the previous contractor.
He knows what he's talking about.
Yep, he know, he was. So, well, I appreciate that you're taking a renewed and serious interest in this, and we'll could, you know, it's, uh, credit to Bruce and Cheryl, uh, I can tell that, that there has been some improvements. I wish it, we've been able to, you know, um, get these guys' attention a little sooner, but, uh, we look forward to better things coming up.
Yeah, and I, and I'm just, real quick, I wanted to, the, it even goes, it goes below Bruce and Cheryl, there are some guys in landscape that really care about this, and they really pour their heart into this, and, uh.
I know, it's just difficult.
So, I don't wanna go through everybody, but I just, you know, they know who they are, and I just want them to make sure we recognize them.
Well, that was all inclusive, and I would totally expect that you'd catch that down, but we can see a difference, appreciate the work, and continue to step it up, I appreciate that.
You know, there's been a lot of, uh, conversation on this, and I trust that staff will look at a different, uh, and better way to manage the LMDs, um, maybe looking at, uh, different account numbers. Uh, my understanding is that everything is to be put into one pod, but that's fair to, um, other districts if that is the case. Uh, the, the better solution I would think would be to create different account numbers for each LMD, because those are the, the residents living in that LMD are the ones that are really paying, uh, to maintain it. So I trust that staff will be looking at that.
Appreciate the fact that you're auditing it, I think that's gonna reveal some stuff here. Mr. Perti and I have had.
There's 241 landscape.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
Each one does have a separate account.
Nobody had a desire to look at this previously, and I appreciate that.
And so we're digging in on past practice, looking at where things were allocated by formula, things like that, and getting back down to, uh, you know, actual real dollars and in real time, et cetera. Uh, so we'll be able to come back with a really complete picture of what's going on in each of those 241 districts, and then going with our tracking software and iPads, et cetera, we will be able to account for staff time and contractor time, et cetera, throughout all the 241 districts.
I, I do think that 241, um, accounts would be difficult to maintain, but we could consolidate these 241 accounts into four districts. That would be easy to monitor, just saying.
All it takes, all it takes is a vote of the people in every one of those districts.
I think that with the, with the way these districts, some of these, uh, districts are laid out with some, you know, a lot of, um, LMD area, others are, are, you know, like a tree every 30 feet, you know, so there's a difference in, in what's going on in them. I think the audit will shed a lot of light on this, so I move to approve the item.
Second.
Following that.
Got a motion, second? Any other discussion? Call for the question.
Ledford?
Yes.
Correo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, let's go to item 7.2.
Before we move on, can I just say one thing, uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to or not, but, um, letting these items discuss Yellen Park, and there was a comment made that some parks are, are being worked on ahead of other parks that have been waiting, and I just wanna bring back the idea, um, not to forget that Yellen Park was under a time constraint because of the, the strings that were attached and the donors that donated that property, and so it had to be developed. It wasn't, um, any sign of disrespect to any of the other, other parks, but without doing what we did to develop that park, we would've lost it. So it has nothing to do with wanting to jump in ahead on purpose, and, um, I just wanted to clarify that public understands.
You think it's the protest, I, all I said was, that's what happened.
But, but when the public, when they hear this, they may not understand what we're talking about here.
You always got people whose grandkids are looking to use it.
No, I understand that, no, I understand, but if it had to be not developed, that park, we would've lost it. So I just wanna make sure that the public is aware that we're not disrespecting the other parks, it was a time constraint on that park that forced us to develop it, and we did.
7.24.
And I have to dog in that bite, because I don't have a park, so.
I did pull that out, uh, because I want to make sure that ADPH is going to provide the services that are being provided currently to those existing non-profit organizations that are there right now. Um, with their, with the contract going to, uh, ADPH, um, they, they may have a different business plan, uh, but again, just wanted to make sure that, um, the current nonprofit groups that are there now continue to be provided that space. ABPH may have a way to maybe charge them a minimum fee, whatever that may be. I trust the staff has looked at the contract, and there is nothing that would prohibit to have those groups that are there right now to continue to be provided with that space, so that they continue to provide the services that they do. With that, I didn't mention at the workshop the possibility of opening another community house on the east side, because the people that need those programs, most of them, or some, don't have transportation to get to those, those community houses. So if we could spread them out throughout the city, that would help those residents who need to have those services closer to their place of residence. Mr. Perti mentioned the possibility of maybe looking at a storefront, at a commercial center. That would be something that would be a great idea to have, so that residents on the east side are able to have access to those programs that are provided. That's the reason I pulled that in.
So let's, Staff, can you give a response?
Sure. The, I think the, the idea of putting something in the contract to alleviate the idea of charging groups for space by ABPH was never put in the contract, was because that's just a concept that was never brought up by the city. The houses from day one never did that. And it was never a thought. It was always, as long as you, one, you don't charge the residents for services, programs, anything you do in the neighborhood house, we don't charge you. That's the concept. That's how it's always been. So it's never a concept that we had to tell ABPH that, because they are in all of the houses, and they, they benefit from that, but they also understand how we are pro, they've been there for, since I've been involved with neighborhood houses, and they, they understand and they flow with that. And talking with them and going through the RFP process, and then when they won the RFP process, they understood that this is how the neighborhood houses for the city flow, that there is no charge for space to any of the groups, that they will continue to work with the current groups and bring in more groups and more programs. So, but that thought process is not there. They understand the current exercise is, will continue.
Just wanted to make sure that that was the case. And that made, will this give those groups an opportunity to expand their services? For instance, I know that Shirley realizes one of the houses, and because of city policy, they cannot provide further services, like having attorneys for consultation. If ABPH now takes over those houses, will that provide these groups to have the facility to expand their services?
Absolutely. It's never, and I, absolutely, all the groups can expand their services. So I've been working with Shirley for, Patricia and I have been talking constantly, so absolutely.
Okay. Again, just wanted to make sure that it's understood.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I was simultaneously going to pull this item as well, and I spoke to Staff about this earlier. So, so here's the issue that came up, was brought to my attention, was they do a similar program in the wellness houses in a neighboring city. And, but they're, the program operators being told that if they have more than like eight or nine people, when, when they've got like 12 or 15 people or so for the class, they have to turn around, and they can't do it there, and they have to go rent space over at the ABPH facility. And it's either, they got to turn away a third of their parenting group, or whatever it is they have there, or try to find somebody to come up to Rob Peter to pay Paul, you know? And that has me seriously concerned, because that now moves that project out of the neighborhood that it was intended to serve, and then back over to their office facility over there, and.
It defeats the purpose.
Yeah, completely defeats the purpose of that. And that rental fee could have been something that would have gone into the program that the, that the subgroup was doing here. How do we address that and make sure, because an 1,800 square foot house clearly can handle 15 people and three staff members, and they're being told it can't. So I want to make sure that's not happening here before we vote on this.
Okay. I did talk to ABPH before coming, and the, the account is, is quite different in that the directive came from the City of Lancaster, that overcrowding of the house is not acceptable, and that while eight to 15 people is acceptable with certain equipment. Houses, each neighborhood house is built differently. Our tumbleweed house is very different than our Yucca house. And each room can handle a certain amount of people, depending on if you have chairs or if you have tables and chairs.
I did, I did public assemblage work, and I understand this.
Okay.
Requires work footage.
And I understand you do. I'm, for the sake of those listening, I'm going there. And when the City of Lancaster understood that too many people were being put in a room with tables and chairs, they said, they limited the amount of people who could be in that room, not the house, that room, with tables and chairs. And they told ABPH, this will not happen, and stop it. And that's how ABPH made the directive to that group. And, and so ABPH was the bearer of bad news. They are having a meeting with the group to see how they can, you know, make it happen, but they, nothing has been brought up about charging them rent or anything else. Now, to that extent.
I got emails, so.
Well, and I understand that the group, you know, is, the group is a subcontractor of ABPH, so it's to their benefit that the group continues their program. The other thing also is that, the, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
Derail.
Derail. But the, but the direct, the Lancaster houses are run very, very differently than ours. Some groups have to pay to use the house in Lancaster, and some don't. I have no idea how that works. Didn't want to ask, didn't want to get into it, but they are, are very different than how we do ours. I know this group has never paid to use the houses there, but, but I know as of now, they don't. And it's not the intention of ABPH to hurt a grant they have to have them pay rent. They just need to work out the parameters of the training that this group needs to do, to meet the parameters that the city is putting on them in that house, or putting them in another space, to meet the training volume they have.
Well, I hope that we set our, our program up so that we can facilitate the largest amount of our residents to use these programs possible. And also, I want to make sure that you guys know that it doesn't have to be a house. A lot of my head been talking. We've got the Oasis Rec Center, and like the city manager said, possibly some storefronts that we might be able to use. So I hope that you guys will do some brainstorming so that we can bring some of these services to the east side. We do.
Well, we, and we desperately need this over there on the west side as well. All of them are east of the freeway, and I know that a lot of that went through CDPG money and stuff like that. But we've got the school district over there, about 50% of the kids are on a lunch program on the west side school district. So that, you know, there's a message there. So the problem is, is the area gets skewed, because you have some neighborhoods up there with really high incomes over there. That screws up the demographics for the whole area when it comes to accessing those funds. So keep that in mind. But I just want to make sure that we're aware that there was an issue there, and, and, and as the other council members have indicated, we really want this, we want those rooms full.
Yes, absolutely.
And we want, if we need more, then we get another room, or something like that. But the need is out there. I just want to make sure that something doesn't get hijacked somehow, and not get provided where it needs to be done, where we have that walk-up ability. That's the whole idea there.
Sure. We have had groups that are too big, and we have found them space to meet other places. Because there have been groups that have come and said, we have a group of 50 that we want to have in your neighborhood house, and 50 is just too many with tables or with chairs, or tables. And we have had to find them another space to go. And we've been able to do that. But we don't, we just don't want to say, no, you can't meet here, and then leave them out there. There's, there's customer service that has to be done.
And good job, too. I understand the Girl Scouts are meeting as for recruiting purposes, once a week or once a month at, at our facilities?
Yeah, they were, and now we've had to refer them to churches for bigger groups. And, yes, and we've had several gold medals. We've had, I think, I don't know if Tricia's here, but about 15, 18 gold awards done through our neighborhood houses and our programs, so.
So they're doing exactly what they're intended to do.
Good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that concern got out there, because it had brought to my attention, and want to make sure that, that we think about it before I get another email.
Yes, but they're meeting with her tomorrow.
Outstanding.
All right. Any other thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? How about a vote?
Ledford?
Yes.
Creo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. All right, let's go to item eight, appointments. We have a director for the Palm Bay Aerospace Academy for a three-year term, commences on August 1st, 2018, expires July 31st, 2021.
In abundance precaution, I'm just going to refuse myself in this for having done business with the Aerospace Council. It may have been right about the 12-month mark. I imagine about the 12-month mark, it's going to get an advice from our city attorney.
To recuse, he's done business with the Aerospace Academy, almost a year now?
But he's, oh, he's done business with the Aerospace Academy. I would recommend that you refuse yourself.
How about me, since I'm on the board?
Well, you're leaving, and you could still vote. It's not of financial interest.
Okay. Thought at one time we were looking to appoint Councilman Creo. Did we have this discussion before at another meeting?
I would like to see applications be put out, so we can have a variety of people with a variety of interests. I would like to have this be open to the public or anybody interested in filling these positions. Also, I just want to make sure that whoever takes a position realizes that they have a very strict attendance policy, and that it's frowned upon if you're late. And if you miss two meetings, you won't be able to stay on the table. So with that being said, I think we have.
Is there, what, what else is coming up, up there? Mr. Kent, you two?
I'm sorry?
The other member that the city represents?
We have one step down, is that correct, our residents here? And then we'll have our two positions here. You know, since we have until July 30th, that's when, when I term out, this is not a big rush, so.
All right, should we have a?
Careful, thoughtful.
Not to the city appointment, is it?
No, I think it's at large.
So then the only, the only appointment to represent the city would be the seat that should be turned out? Because the other city is not a formidable city council.
I think we got a couple of seats on there, but I think it's in our interest, you know, I think that with the, with the way the partnership is structured, I would, I'd be in favor of, you know, having Mr. Creo on there at this time as well, so.
But that's what I was thinking. There's a partnership. What's the point of having a partnership if we're not?
And I don't, and I don't think this is one of those spots where we're going to delegate everything.
Well, it is the city's seat, but it doesn't mean that it has to be the city council person. It's up to us to decide who takes that spot.
Right.
It can be one of the city council people, but it could also be some great engineer that we want to put in to represent the city.
And I liked just like what we did to fill in your seat the last time, was hoping to vote to apply. And we had five or six applicants.
Right.
So I think that that's a good way to do it, too.
So why don't we make a motion to do an application? We'll second that, and we're all in agreement, then that'll take care of the issue.
I'm okay with that.
Who wants to make a motion? You want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
You want a second?
I'll make the motion to open the applications up to the public.
And a second?
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let's do a vote on the motion.
Ledford?
Yes.
Creo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop? Oh, Bishop's not here. So it's four yes, Bishop abstaining.
So we're going to do an advertisement now, and we'll bring it back. Maybe our June meeting?
It just takes a little while for the recruitment process to go through, and then we'll bring it back as soon as we can.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. All right, let's go to item nine. We have a public hearing, item 9.1. This has to do with our CDPG Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Grant. Ladies?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Staff is requesting city council hold a public hearing to review the draft 2018 through 2019 action plan and the proposed expenditures of CDPG Community Development Block Grant and Home, Home Investment Partnership Grant. Receive public comment in compliance with the requirements of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the city's participation plan. Direct staff to incorporate the public comments into the 2018-2019 action plan and update the proposed expenditures based on HUD grant allocations. Approve the 2018-2019 action plan and request CDPG and home grant funds, and authorize the city manager or as designee to execute the application for federal assistance, required certifications, and other documents associated with the 2018 through 2019 action plan, and request CDPG and home funds and agreements for subrecipients. The city is an entitlement city. As a prerequisite to receive annual CDPG and home allocation, the city is required to submit a consolidated plan every five years and the annual action plan every year to HUD for approval. For 2018 through 2019, the estimated allocation for CDPG funds is $1.2 million. The proposed eligible activities are summarized on page two of your staff report. It includes $180,000 for public services allocated to South Antelope Valley Emergency Services, $355,000 for capital improvements, including infrastructure at Corson Arts Colony and ADA compliance projects, including ADA compliance at Yellen Park, $664,950 for fair housing services, section eight, one of, section 108 payments and administrative costs. The 2018 through 2019 estimated allocation for the home program is $350,000. The proposed eligible activities are summarized on page three of your staff report. It includes $167,500 for multifamily new construction programs, $60,000 for residential acquisition and rehabilitation, and $52,500 for the Community Housing Development Organization, JOJO, and $35,000 for tenant-based rental assistance, as well as $35,000 for administrative costs. A public hearing was held before the city council on March 6th, 2018, to receive public input prior to the preparation of this draft 2018 through 2019 action plan. In compliance with the city's approved citizen participation plan and regulations, a public notice was published in the Antelope Valley Press on April 2nd, 2018, to inform residents that the draft action plan was available for review and comments. Citizens were advised that copies were available for review at the city and on the city's website. The public notice also invited citizens to provide written comments, and invited citizens to participate tonight at this public hearing. Staff recommend council hold a public hearing to invite citizen input to the draft 2018 through 2019 action plan, incorporate the public comments, and update the proposed expenditures based on HUD grant allocations, and approve the city manager to execute documents related to the submission of the action plan and subrecipient agreements. The action plan will be submitted to HUD on or before August 16th, 2018, in accordance with notice CPD 1801, which is guidance on submitting the annual action plan. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for our staff at this time?
No, I think our staff's done a good job on this, securing these funds year after year. And I'm glad they're still available for us to take advantage of.
There was quite a fight through the league to maintain the CDPG funds, because that, they were seriously on the chopping block over the last year, and.
Be a lot of pain if they were to cut them off.
Yeah, they wanted it.
For all.
And the cities, we all banded together, and we all pounded down the doors in DC last year about this, about this issue, and they saw the positive aspects of it. So not only good job securing the funds, but the resources that you guys identified for that, I think we get the highest and best use, the best bang for the buck with what you guys are doing with that. So I appreciate that.
I think with, with the housing prices starting to really rise, and the price of rents really going up, that anything that we can do for our residents that need affordable housing or rental assistance, I think every dollar that we have benefits our community. So I appreciate your efforts in doing this, and I hope that we can do too, so.
One of the goals on this program is to help homelessness prevention and assistance. Is, to your knowledge, is there a difference between what this program is going to accomplish as to what Measure H will do? In other words, can both funding mechanisms be used for the same purpose? I know it's for fight homelessness, but there may be some restrictions as to the different programs, different funding mechanisms? Does that make sense?
So each funding comes with their own funding requirements. Within the CDPG program, we do have homeless prevention services provided through the Save South Antelope Valley Emergency Services. And then through the home program, we do have the tenant-based rental assistance that is currently assisting 30 extremely low-income, rent-burdened senior households. So I think putting all of these funding sources together, they work cooperatively to reach out to our, our community. There, in this action plan, it does not include Measure H funds.
The golden, goldback indicator here in this document, it's on page three, it says 7,000 people. Is that doable?
That's the current number that have participated.
It's not really doable, it's being done.
Yeah, it's already been done.
Okay, thanks.
So again, CDPG being federal dollars, Measure H being county dollars, but the way these dollars work.
You have to leverage them a little bit here, huh?
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to testify on this item? You merely come forward and give us your name for the record, please. All right.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Served. All right, discussion? All right, discussion or a motion?
Move to third.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Let's do the vote, please.
Ledford?
Yes.
Carrillo?
Yes.
Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, before we go to item 10, which is our public comments, I'm going to go ahead and open the successor agency. I'm going to call it to order, and I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Carrillo?
Here.
Director Hoffbauer?
Here.
Bettencourt, there. Bishop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Got a quorum. Item three, we have a consent calendar. Again, the public's opportunity to comment on the consent calendar if you wish to do so. This will be your opportunity. All right, see you none. We are at the consent calendar, city council. Everybody wish to pull an item for discussion? We have investment balances, we have quarter report on investment balances and amendments. Or we can approve it just with a?
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. All right, we're now at item five, non-agenda items under your successor agency agenda, public comments. We're also at the same area in your city council agenda, which is item 10, non-agendized item, public comments. If you want to make a public comment, you merely come forward, give us your name for the record. Understand we got a three-minute timeline we're trying to work within, and so Becky, you going to time us?
Yes, I will.
Are you going to let us know when time's up? You going to raise your arm?
Your dink.
All right, and we'll follow it up. Yes, sir.
It's been a long time due to medical situations, and within my home, I've appeared before this council. But I was grateful for the openness of all our city officials that I approached during the break time before the start of the city council to express some concerns that made up with you and could deal with in their own departments, and I appreciate that. Especially Mr. Ferkday Purdy, and the city attorney, and the library director, Mr. Shup. I have, I mentioned to Mayor Ledford, the homeowners group association headed by Marla Kester is no more, unfortunately, because Marla passed away a few months ago to cancer, so she will not be very addressing this body again. But I admire her for her activism and her trying to make city of Palmdale a better place as she ever hopes to try. Lastly, I share a concern about an area that we have an ADA possible violation in our public library that needs, that the city manager and the city attorney are now addressing. It doesn't seem to be compliant. We're in a little pit area where most of the computers are for handicap accessibility and also for parents who are dealing with scrawls, down those steps to get to the computers. So hopefully that will work out. And one last thing, I have the time, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm back in action and I will be working very hard on that little strip on 12 Street East to balance out the asphalt burning that was done nicely on one side, need to be done now on the other side, because it stinks to high heaven, at least according to my, my friends. I have no sense of smell myself, but it collects water still and it needs to be taken care of, just as, as it has been done previously on the south side of that same street. Thank you again for your time and your effort, and I hope the other matters that are facing the council regarding our mayor will be resolved soon. Thank you.
Sir, could I get your name for the record, please?
Oh, Jerry Coke, C O P E, Coke Barback. And thank you, Mrs. Bettencourt, for replying to my emails as my councilperson.
Very good. All right, who else would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Could I get your name, please?
My name is Jamie Knott, and I live on West Avenue, R12, near the corner of West Avenue S and Tierra Sabida. I moved here about four years ago from a suburban neighborhood near the San Gabriel Valley. We chose the neighborhood that we're in because of the high quality of the homes and, and the neighborhood, and it's beautifully mixed with the rural Antelope Valley. All the homes are on one acre lots. Our desire was to have a safe, peaceful community where we can have our horses and our animals. We found exactly what we wanted, and we love it. We've now learned that a developer is wanting to build a high-density apartment building right next to us on land that is currently zoned, R1, also like one acre lots. My home is just one house away from that property. So my concern is how having that high-density apartment building right next door will significantly affect our quality of life. It'll drastically change our safe and peaceful neighborhood, where right now, throughout at night, it's quiet, it's dark enough to see the stars, it's beautiful. Of course, a huge, huge concern that we have is the number of cars, the traffic congestion, and the parking problems that this will bring. It seems reasonable that maybe there should be an area where the size of the lots graduate, there still are one, till they move out to an area of multiple unit homes and not have an apartment right next to, you know, our type of home. So we would ask that you please consider how this will affect our families, but also how it may negatively affect the city of Palmdale. My request is that the city of Palmdale would do an independent corridor study there. Obviously, it's really necessary to have a plan in order to have healthy growth in our city. We all want to see Palmdale flourish, and obviously, it can only be done with proper planning, so my request is for that corridor ass study. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir. Could I get your name, please?
Good evening. My name is John Cooper, and I also live in that area of Anna Verdi up there that she was just discussing. And I've got some concerns. There's been developers that are interested in doing a number of projects up there, and the area is all currently zoned, one house to one acre, and it's all rural development. And he was proposing rather high-density type housing to go right next to the rural development area. And I know that one of the studies that's overdue is the Avenue S Corridor Study that needs to be done so we can have a master plan for that area where we can get a more even understanding as a transition from the rural area to the business and the apartments and whatnot that may be suggested. And I think the city of Palmdale needs to do that Avenue S Corridor Study, and I know it's a lot of money, it's around $2 million, so that's going to take a couple of years to do it. But if the money is short, have the developers pay it if they have to do it. My biggest concern is that there's environmental impact reports that are being done up in that area, and I think they are going to take those reports from their people and try and bring them to the council member, the commission, and try and have a lot of that area rezoned. And I want to prevent that because we will defeat the purpose of the master plan Avenue S Corridor Study, you know, so we need to do that. And the city of Palmdale needs to do that study, and if it's financially a bit much, which took $2 million for two or three years.
Well, I'll talk to that when you get done.
Okay. The developers can pay for it, provided we get an impartial group to study that area, not someone they've hired to say everything's green light here, you know, everything's all good, because it's going to impact a lot of people, and the roads, and the traffic, and a lot of different things. And if you bring in high-density situations, there's going to be more fire service needed, more police, schools, a lot of different things are going to be factored into that. And I know there were a number of problems at the Anna Verdi project out at S that is actually part of the city of Palmdale. And initially, they had a lot of problems there with the developer that would bankrupt and had a number of problems that didn't follow through on a number of items that he said he was trying to do, wanted to be a fire station out there, and he is there now as a school there, and areas for shopping that were back there for those residents that never occurred. So I'm just urging that Palmdale do the Avenue S Corridor Study, and we get that done so we can have a master plan that will allow that area to be better transitioned into that rural development, and that we just don't get a hodgepodge of what developers want to do just by doing these EIR reports and getting that sorted out.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, okay, I just thought I heard a beep there, I was like, oh, that wasn't believable. All right, I was going to say, I was going to talk a little bit about, you know, tonight we've released the RFP for our new citywide general plan. That's a couple million dollars for the whole city. So now we're going to do that, request for proposals, we're going to get somebody that'll come in and help us put that citywide general plan into effect. What you're referencing to is an Avenue S Corridor Plan, actually much less if that's in fact the direction we go. And years ago, we went down this road before, and we denied some zone changes with the promise of a study.
Right.
And that's when the recession hit, and financially, we just weren't able to follow through. There wasn't any pressure to develop it anyway.
Right.
But those conditions are changing, and we understand that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I can add to that, we met with the developer yesterday. Staff has been insisting on a corridor study since we first started meeting with the developer. Yesterday, I got agreement from the developer to provide reimbursement for the city to select a consultant to do a corridor study.
Yeah.
And so if this project moves forward, it will be with the city hiring a consultant to do a corridor study, and the developer providing funds upfront to reimburse the city for paying that contract. So we certainly hear that. We will be sending out response letter emails to everyone who's contacted us. We know it's a big issue. We've brought this up with the developer on every occasion we've met with them over the last six months. I think they're starting to realize that we know what we're talking about, and so if this project moves forward, it's only going to move forward with a corridor study that's being funded by the developer but contracted through the city.
Great. That's all good. Thank you. All right, who else would like to address the council?
Hi, my name's Mary Dinko, and I live near the corner of Tierra Sabida and Avenue S. I too live on a one acre lot, and I am against 164-unit apartment complex right against my, my home. I'm not against development. Now, it is zoned, one house, one acre right now, there's 13 acres there, so we would love to see 13 homes. The developer wants to see 164-unit apartment complex with a swimming pool right next door to my house and his party house, and I'm thinking, there's got to be somewhere to negotiate in between, and that's where the Avenue S Corridor Study, we believe, will help negotiate what can be there, because there is a problem with density. He's also asking for a variance on parking where he only has to have one parking place per apartment. Well, people who come to those apartments are going to want more. They're, they're still going to bring their cars, and where are they going to park? They're going to park on our streets. Our streets with no, no lights, no curbs. We live there because there's no lights and no curbs and no sidewalks. We live there so we can have our, our different animals, our horses, our sheep, and it's a direct conflict between the urban developer, the urbanite who wants an apartment and our donkey's brain, or our chicken's clucking, or our rooster's, you know, cockadoodledoo at 3:00 in the morning. We live there, and we tolerate it because we love it. So please, really think about this Avenue S Corridor Study. In 2008, we fought a battle for two years, from 2006 to 2008, and in 2008, the city council approved an Avenue S Corridor Study to be done before the developer could develop. And I've come before council a couple of times bringing it up, but I know the council didn't have the money to do it. So it looks like maybe now they do. We appreciate your efforts. We hope we'll be able to be part of the discussions of what will be there, shouldn't the developer should be there, and us, and the city, so that we can come to a compatible building plan for all along Avenue S. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your diligence on this as well, too, so you've always been a strong advocate for your neighborhood over there, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. I keep trying to advocate, but nobody's.
No, we're listening, we're listening, trust me. I think the city manager pretty well summed it up, though, where we're going.
Yes, ma'am. Could I get your name, please?
My name is Patricia Salazar, and I represent Chilla from the Antelope Valley. We have a group in the, what is her name? Tabou, Tabou, they're a little house. And we have a members, and we have a person who has complaints about the regulations for that. I'm going to read, okay? Abuse by owners of homes, apartments, and mobile homes are increasingly intolerant for our families. We work only to pay rent, neglecting other important areas such as food and health, which we also pay for it. We raise the rent, they raise the rent two to three times per year in an amount of 50 or hundreds of dollars. So we have come to help us to stop this abuse. We need your help, and let us know what can we do. It's our people who, who came to Chilla and they need help. We want to, to know about your help. What can we do?
I would suggest that we have a meeting at City Hall and talk about this in detail, and that way we could better understand options and realities. There may be some things we can do, maybe, maybe there's some we can't, but at least we'll all be on the same page. And so I would suggest we do that. Mr. Purdy, I'm going to look to you to maybe set up a time to, to get together and talk.
So this is a mobile home park that's been increasing rents?
Yes, mobile home park and apartments.
Okay. Which one is it?
Which, which project is, or is there multiple? Which?
Which mobile home park?
We live on apartments.
They live in apartment, but we have person who lives in mobile home in Avenue T. Avenue T, close to Perlas on Island.
Is that the one we're working on right now?
No, but we have worked on it before.
Yeah. So there's certain things the city, like with the mobile home parks, and you've had problems with them, inappropriate rent increases and things, so I think that you need to get the folks with the, especially with the mobile home parks, get some documentation together and bring it in, and let the city attorney look at that, because again, that's a mobile home park we've had to bring back in line because they were doing some stuff they shouldn't have been doing.
Yeah, we have a mobile home park review, rent review committee, so that area, there's probably a response if you know of. The apartments, it may be another one, but we need to get into the details, we're not going to be able to do that at a meeting with a three-minute timeline. So we need to set up a time to get together and meet.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So that's something that I also discussed with Mike Miller earlier, and I agree with you, Tom, and we, we both agree on that.
So stop this, Mr. Purdy's got a card, can give you the call, set up a time.
I need to start carrying my assistance, seeing how to use cards to the.
Thank you, thank you very much.
He's right there.
And another thing, I got one letter from.
Exactly. It all goes down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, who else would like to address the council? Yes, sir, could I get your name, please?
Sure, can. My name is Gary Asklek. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak, City Council. I'm also here about the Avenue S corridor study. My house is probably the closest to all of them to spoke before to this project and we've been down this road before. And the last time I spoke here, I had mentioned that we have a chance to really paint a masterpiece there. And to have something that does not have a net in how you lay out the properties is just given for failure. I work at Palm Dale Hospital, I'm a physical therapist, I'm an occupational therapist and a physical therapist. I specialize in hand therapy.
That's where I recognize you from. You're a coach and my wife.
Her hand works now.
You're finding it hard to do, you're doing a swell job.
Thank you. We don't use the word swell. I'm the only certified hand therapist in the valley here. And I live quite close to the hospital and it's a great location. It's a wonderful neighborhood. Enjoyed living there for over 18 years. Home's beautiful, the neighbors are great and we hate to see any of that change. And we see some things that just don't look too great for us. There's a 60 mile an hour speed limit sign on Avenue S, the very narrow road on Terra Sabida. These things just would not work to have 164 units and an apartment and all the cars. And you must understand that these people also have friends who will also be inviting people over with their cars and no place to park and a lot of traffic, a lot of congestion. I have worked with people's bodies and their broken bodies and there's a natural progression with how our arms and hands work and things like that. You just don't stick a hand at the end of the shoulder and think that that's gonna be something that functions. We really need to look at what would work best and how to transition all this out and look at the big picture and not just throw something up, you know, very quickly and take the money and run. One of the first items that you brought up today was the purchasing of these cars for the city. And you wanted to have them provided by something more local. Well, now we've got builders down in Orange County that want to come up here. Why are we doing something with, you know, these people that are out in the area and don't appreciate what we have? They just want to put their building up. And we would like to really have the Avenue S corridor study done and the proper thing done for the people that already live here. Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. Your timing's perfect.
Like all three minutes.
She's got you trained. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, the corridor study is the only way that's gonna get everybody on the same page. We may not all agree with the corridor study results, but it will be a community-wide exercise and we will come to some plan. And it's always better than no plan. All right, who else would like to speak? Anybody? Well, somebody. We're a very polite city.
We certainly are and that's a good thing.
Good evening, everybody. Ozil Santos Jr., representing Veterans for Organic Medicines. I agree with our city manager there. He was talking earlier, when you're in need of something, everybody wants to start a study and discuss it. But why are you discussing it? Why don't you do something in the meantime? Temporary licenses is an option for the cannabis industry or cannabis business within your city. Also, all of these community services that I've been listening to all day who are in need, I would like to help fund all those with the business as well. And to Corridor S, I used to own a home there, 37134 Toby Avenue, beautiful neighborhood. Too bad. Hope they don't do that. So options everywhere. It's easy to get a liquor license or a tobacco shop license and they pop up everywhere. Very unhealthy. I smoke, it's terrible. We have a Bevmo. Huge. Providing alcohol nonstop, very unhealthy. Options, recreationally cannabis is safer. Medicinally, it's safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, who else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Mark Sanchez. And I just wanted to thank you, Council, for opening up applications for the Aerospace Academy. As you all know, the aerospace is a charter school for the residents as one of three in this valley.
You gotta address those.
Okay. But also too, you know, so if you're not familiar with the charter school and that, so. You know, it's very imperative, I guess, as the, actually, no, as the responsibility of, as your council as being a shareholder partnership within the aerospace, accepting applications, you know, I'll tell you this right now. As a shareholder, the partnership, you know, my last few board meetings I've been attending with the Palm Dale School District has been very hostile. They don't like charter schools, they don't support them. And, you know, it's very sad to see because kids are doing wonderful things and this valley really needs it. You know, I mean, hey, if you have a competitor, do something different. And that's my advice I always give to the superintendent and to a brunt. For example, today, and what they threw at me, well, the new campuses, that's what the parents want. No, it's the value the kids are getting, the education. So, you know, we really reconsider that all of you really take those applications considerably and actually put someone with some substance and some merit that will do something because politics is overshadowing. And Mr. Curie, with all due respect, I hadn't seen you and your engagement when you were on the PSD to our charter school. Would be great to have you there, we need that. We have no board member from the PSD who supports our school. That's politics for you. Well, charter schools are doing great things, just like our other schools, I support them all. Thank you.
I can tell you the Aerospace Academy's got about 750 kids waiting to go there.
Oh, and my term is up, so to answer your other question, I'll be, I'll be turning out in July. So I see there's a lot of seats opening up in the community, so we'll see where that takes us.
There you go.
Seat open.
All right. Who else? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, what I think that means is we're getting ready to move on. We're gonna have information reports from our various council members on our committee memberships and meetings. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
Busy, busy, busy month, a lot of stuff going on. I'll start with the ribbon cutting, because I went to a few ribbon cuttings with the mayor. We did a crack and chicken and waffles. Interior real estate, that was a big one, right by Trade Center Drive, really good turnout for that ribbon. I think we almost had a couple hundred people there. Element Hotel, we did less than a week ago, that was a great turnout. Element's hotel's gonna have a higher level of quality to travelers that come through our city and
Very nice.
and just a better quality of life for everyone coming here and visiting us. Ribbon cutting for First City Credit Union, they're right there. Destination O8 in the Walmart Center. Really nice office. I went to the Palm Dale Chamber Family Picnic on Saturday, good turnout, that happens every year. Really good for the community. Hispanic Chamber Lunch of the Day, that was really, a lot of good information there. And it's good to connect with a lot of the local businesses and people out in the community. And I learned a lot about a small business debt while we were there today. Too much of that. A QMD, we're still awarding money out for businesses that are using old equipment, old trucks, trying to do what we can to clean up the air with rent money and get new equipment into the businesses that are using equipment that is polluting our air. ABTA, one of the big ones, we approved new wireless charging stations for the electric buses. So we'll be having those go in soon so the buses can charge as they soft, have the bus soft and they can make their routes. Streetlight Workshop, that was a lot of fun. Streetlights, I think our staff did a good job with that one, especially Ben, really got down to the nuts and bolts and the details. And I think we have a really good light picked out and a really good plan of action when it comes to switching out our streetlights to LEDs. Tended to volunteer appreciation lunch. I think we gave about over 100 awards or appreciation, or 100 certificates that day. That was really well attended and it really is nice to see all the volunteer action that happens in our city. It really is reassuring to see. There's more. Also, we had the Sheriff, Sheriff Booster's Casino Night a few weeks ago. That was very well attended with an estimated over 1,500 people. And we're still waiting on the final count on how much money we were able to raise, but that was, that was good for them. There's plenty more stuff going on, but all of my other council members, take it from there. Thank you.
All right. Let's go next. Steve?
So we, we had the SCAG Transportation Committee meeting followed by the Regional Council meeting. Biggest discussion is the funding sources and projects coming down with Measure M Metro money and some of the projects under SB 1, under that umbrella. The, I have attended the third in a series of the Council Academy with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. Couple of weeks ago, we were out at the EVOC Center out at Pomona and got to drive those cars in the skid pans and stuff like that. It was a lot of fun. Those guys, program is really, is really good from the perspective of just showing the, some of the challenges that our deputies are facing on a regular basis out there. And you take a 25-year-old kid out there and you've gotta deal with some of the stuff. It's amazing when you end up seeing that apply because do the ride-alongs as well. And I take notes during the whole thing and it's just, I, it's, some of the, especially some of these youngsters, I just, I have, people were looking at my pictures going, is that an Explorer? No, that's a, that's a real gun, that's a real cop. So those guys are really doing a great job. I also tended the Sheriff's Boosters, boy, I tell you what, the only guy that wasn't there was the Fire Marshal. That place is packed. Liability Trust Fund, so that's the other reason why I'm at the Council Academy is because we're dealing with the challenges and the claims that are coming up on a regular basis. Although the overall claims are down for use of force and shootings, the value of the claims are up. And these guys have figured out how to kind of play the game and intimidate the county council's office. And a number of us, as the city manager indicated earlier, are not getting Christmas cards from those guys right now. So we're kind of holding their feet to the fire and they need to do a better job because, you know, they, every once in a while, the guys are screwing up out there and then you gotta pay that liability. But some of the stuff is just out of line. Couple of trips out with MetroLink and our staff, I want to thank Mr. Behan for his help coordinating that item. We've got a couple of really serious issues going on with a couple of our rail crossings here. Palm Dale Boulevard, the great crossing at Rancho Vista Boulevard. And most significantly, we were out there watching trains and cars to Sierra Highway over crossing there. And it was, I thought it was a very productive meeting. It really got a better perspective of what our problem is. They saw, they saw the backup and it wasn't even rush hour and they saw the problem. So they're working hard to adjust the timing issues, they're looking at some other solutions out there. You guys know that that crossing actually isn't one guy that does that. They, a couple of those gates, MetroLink works, operates, and a gate on the other side of the street, Union Pacific operates. And there's, I think there's a canary that flies between them to trip up or something. But I did not realize that. So that's one of the challenges that MetroLink has is they gotta deal with UP all the time. So learned a lot and they learned a lot. And we had everybody up there plus people from Metro there looking at that issue because, like we explained to them, you're not even at shift change right now. And you're not talking about 1,000 people trying to get out of Lockheed and the sheriff's station and the North River, and then the commuters coming home and northbound. So I think they got a little bit better idea. If anybody out there gets any other ideas in this, let me know because we've got some follow-up coming up with those guys.
Did you discuss the issue where they're loading the train and the arms come down and you have to wait for them to load the train?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just a noise they're making.
Yeah, so part of that problem, I don't, I don't get into a big, but that was one of the main things we brought up. And we showed them, the train is sitting there, it's not moving. And people are backing up and then the sheriff comes by or a fire truck comes by and they'll go around the gates. And then everybody else says, oh, hell, I'll go around the gates. And the engineer's having a stroke because he's trying to hit the horn because he's trying to go. So they understand the issue, the issue of the gates staying down, then all of a sudden going up and then going down because now the train isn't coming out. So they're working on that. The guys got a better perspective of it now that we all stood out there. And Mr. Behan was really good at explaining some of the technical aspects of what was happening.
It's just shocking to me that this stuff goes on for years before they do anything about it.
Railroad's been here for hundreds of years.
Yeah, well, what we've done is we have focused that discussion at each and every one of our transportation committee meetings and in our, our interaction with Metro, our interaction with MetroLink, and our interaction with the supervisors' transportation. They're hearing a consistent story that this is a problem and at some point, you know, we say, listen, we talked to you about it here and here and here and here and all of a sudden, now we get a-
Will it help us to take a less load of citizens down there? Because it's not willing.
Well, we did, we had them, they were all backed up in the traffic though.
Yes, yes.
They would have, they would have been there, but they were caught in traffic. So anyways, we're working on it. Anybody else gets any ideas, let me know. If you want to send me an email, which I can pass on to them, I'll do that as well. AQMD, hey, we've got things coming up too. If you want to get rid of that old stinky lawnmower, it's gotta still run, but you'll get quite a bit of money towards the purchase of new electric deck mowers and other yard equipment. So AQMD is giving away money. Sometimes it's a lawnmower, but, you know, it's all money. So pay attention and come on up. ABTA, as Mr. Bishop also said, South Valley Clinic, we signed the MOU out there. So there'll be a layover and it'll be more convenient for people to be able to get to and from the buses. And because a bus will be doing a timing stop there, it will also facilitate the loading process. So instead of being delayed out of the stop, it'll be sitting where the, where the charging and the loading can be occurring simultaneously. At Contract Cities and Lega City's Legislative Committee meetings and conference calls. And we're just looking at the progress of so many bills. Thank God, the Senator Wiener's bill went down in flames. He really got quite a bit of grief on that one. This is the one that talked about high-density housing issues where we could not, it took away all your local control and would have forced eight-story buildings right around transit centers and no lower than four stories along any major bus route, which would have meant just about any major street in the valley, you couldn't have restricted that zoning. If a bus went by there, within a quarter of a mile, you had to allow up to four stories. So thank God, now he said he's committed to bringing it back, we'll see what the format is in that. And I gotta tell you, Parks and Recs or Rex and Culture?
Oh, your show.
That concert was amazing. I brought my mom, the staff over there, I helped facilitate that. A lot of old folks going in there, not all young like us. And they're so accommodating of everybody, making sure everything works for them. And that concert, it was cool to see all the old folks in there and all tapping their feet because they all recognized that whole first half. Some didn't recognize second half, but that first half, they all knew them. So great job and if you miss it, there were about two seats that were empty in that whole place. It was, it was great. And support the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, just came back from campery and those kids up there were doing a hell of a job. It was amazing watching how hard they're working at their project. So a bunch of other stuff going on, but that's the main stuff, so.
All right.
Okay, so over the next, I also attended the Streetlight Workshop and Mr. Bishop said it was fun, very informational. Ben provided a lot of information. Ben provided a lot of information on how they work. The Palmdale School District had a concert, they call it Rankwest Concert, Annual Concert, great performance by the kids. They are intermediate school kids, 13, 14-years-old, and they're playing at a very high caliber. I was very impressed with how they, they played. This was at the Playhouse. I also attended the Lucky Open House, the Congress, the Assemblyman Lucky, who, the Assemblyman Lucky, who had an open house at the A D T A facility. Good turnout, it was geared toward the Hispanic community. I think he had about 20 people show up and he had some very interesting conversations. We had a Palmdale School District and City Meeting on April 20th, I believe it was, the city manager and Mr. Padilla from the city were able to attend. This was on a Friday, so again, thank you for working your day off in that meeting. I think that it was a very productive meeting. And this came out about Mr. Marc Anthony Sanchez talking about the buses of the school district, stopping traffic on Avenue S and other locations and Laura also. So our bad meeting, I think it was very productive again, talked about a lot of possibilities to improve the traffic, the flow of the buses. They are also looking at getting smaller buses to pick up the kids from the schools and drop them off, so that will also liberate some congestion. And following that, there was a tri-agency meeting in which there were also good conversations with, not only the Palmdale School District, but also the Westside School District. They also mentioned some traffic concerns with the timing of the lighting, which I believe are not being addressed, so that flow around the school service is better. So I think that those meetings are very productive, the tri-agency meetings, and I'd encourage the city manager to encourage all the other agencies to participate because it's something that out of blue, it could be mentioned something on the agenda and there are ways to work around them and not to duplicate efforts throughout the different agencies. The city, the water district and the school districts, even the shared department and the fire department have attended those meetings in the past. So, again, a good meeting. And this weekend, some of us are going to the annual SCAG Conference on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I believe, and anyone else. So after that, we'll be able to report on that conference.
So you're thinking about?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry that I missed the Light Workshop I hear was eliminating, so I'm sorry that I missed it. But I did make it to the City Volunteer Lunch, so that was nice to see how many people we have volunteering. We also have the Sheriff's Volunteer Luncheon. There was a prison meeting that I was not able to make, so I'm hoping that one of you filled in for me while I was gone. I went to the TPAA, the Aerospace Academy fundraiser dinner, they raised lots of money. It was a great event. Did the coffee with the cop, so that was nice, to go out and do that. I also had the opportunity to do my very first chamber walk with the businesses, so I was out there meeting, meeting all the owners and doing that, so that was fun. It was a good time to meet all the businesses. They've never really had face-to-face with me before, so that was a good opportunity. Other things, I think we're still moving ahead with the Adult Use of Marijuana project that we're working on, so that should be coming to fruition here pretty soon with the full, full meeting, I would assume. I'm sure there's some other things that I've forgotten, but that's, that's the gist of it.
All right. Sounds good. Yeah, I, I went on the same business walk. We went to 25th Street and Avenue S, actually got a good report over there. The business owners are happy with the progress because we had some issues that have been identified, so it was a great walk to be able to hear their, their excitement, their, so anyway, I see optimism over there. Looks like we're going to go Catty Corner to that center next time because that other, they've also talked about impacts. So we're dealing with some impacts at 25th and Avenue S, but we're, we're making some headway, so good work. Went to the ribbon cutting for Imagine City. Imagine City?
I did that too, sir.
Over by Buffalo Wild Wings, yeah. It's a, it's a great little business, it's for kids and it works off their imagination, good stuff. Also went with Antelope Hospital, they gave me kind of a little preview of big announcement coming, and I think what we see now in the paper, it's, they've got some challenges they're dealing with, but primarily, they've got to cut back to live within their means, so there's some little stress going on. But as a community, it's time to rally around it and figure it out and everybody become part of the solution. Met with Highland High, some students have got some great ideas and they want to present to the city, so we went and did that. Went to Career Day at the Guidance Charter School, had some very good questions from kids. I don't know how many, I must have done five or six classrooms, so, so we kind of did it all, which is great. And I do that at other schools as well. I went to, doing some prayer breakfast planning meetings, and we're going to get ready Thursday, we're going to have our prayer breakfast. You're all welcome to come and we should have a good event and hopefully focus on some, some good things for our city. Went to the Academy fundraising dinner, it was very good to see everybody from the Academy, some people I got to work with, and we had it at the school itself, so that was always, that's always nice. Went to Shadow Hills and went, visited their Science Olympiad class. Those kids are pretty darn sharp over there and they're focused and they're, they're working towards some common goals. I got to say, you know, our kids today, when we look at things like STEM and, and Science Olympiad, we've got some highly engaged young people and I'm very confident that our city's in very good shape. But it comes from all modes of learning, so I see it in charters and I see it in public school charters and the Palmdale School District, Westside and the High School District, so we all just need to keep cooking. Went to the Airpark Tour, went, our city manager Jim Purte went and visited the volunteers and got to establish some rapport out there, Kathleen Whiteside, who was early recognized for her commitment to that. Anyway, she's got a pretty good hold going on over there and pretty good energy with these volunteers. Also had a, had a tour, Propel LA Tour, came up to the Antelope Valley, a busload of, of business interests that did a tour of both Lancaster and Palmdale. And we got to make a pitch to them for City of Palmdale, they went and looked around some of our business parks and got to see some of the attributes of coming to City of Palmdale. Anyway, I thought that was great because we're bringing outsiders to look around. I think that's important for economic development. We do a good job of cheerleading for ourselves, but the fact is, if you can't get an outsider to come and reinvest in your community, you know, come on, what are we really doing? I, I like that outreach and I think we need to do more and more of that. I went to the Kraken Chicken and Waffles ribbon cutting with Councilman Bishop, that was fun. We also had a Community Resource Fair at the mall, which is very well-attended. We had a great turnout and, so I got to say to Trish Jones, she was part of that and it was a lot of good energy at the mall and hope to see more and more of that. What else here? Just normal meetings, trying to skip over some of the stuff here. I didn't make it to the Intro Real Estate, I think I was out that day for, it was, it was at the Palmdale Chamber Luncheon.
Yeah, there's a chamber at the same.
Same time.
Yeah.
Also went to our Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon again. Our volunteers are awesome, we got a lot of them, and I tell you, our city would not operate without those volunteers, so if you get a chance to say thanks to a volunteer, do so. They're giving their time at no return to them except in the joy of volunteering for their community. And I like that, that's just very positive reinforcement and out of that, we grow and build as a community. And positive energy always will outcome the negative, so more and more is better. Again, more planning, commishure, prayer, breakfast, Playhouse. I think, I went to Lee Ermy's ceremony at the Highlands Church, packed house, pretty darn good tribute to our veteran community and to an icon of the veteran community, and that's Lee Ermy. So he's got a lot, a lot to be thankful for. I think we had some colorful language though, that kind of caught the pastor by surprise, but God's heard it before, luckily. So we're going to get through that.
Pretty cool watching the procession come up the freeway, people lining the, lining the overpasses when they heard he was coming, so that was, that was very cool. And then the Marine, if it wasn't deliberate, it sure as, sure as heck looked like it, but there was that helicopter following that thing and it sure looked like the Marine Corps helicopter following the escort, so.
Hey, Antelope Valley is very vet-centric, and that's a proud trait that we have here. We do respect our military and our first responders and, and the example you just gave is, that's exactly it. Other than that, I could go through this every day, but I'm not sure we want to do all that. Trying to find the best stuff I could bring to you. Just briefings, Science Reforce Source Fair at the Legacy Commons, we had a CECTD project meetings, ribbon cutting for the Element. Element Hotel's very nice, it's millennial-centric though, I'll give it that, so it immediately fills up. I did a 4.0 dinner at 25th Street and Palmdale Boulevard at the Oasis, very well-attended, packed house, lots of kids.
There's a lot more for parents.
Right, but the return on investment is huge.
My daughter-in-law's running it right now.
Well, you're going to be running. All right, I also went to the Home Goods, had their little opening on Sunday. People camped out.
That's amazing.
In front of Home Goods. The management came up and said it's their best opening of Home Goods. Not a surprise, most people like Turner's had their best opening. Lots of points when they come to Palmdale, they have their best opening in the entire corporation. So, good work there. We also, we went to the Northern Corridor Cities Meeting down in Santa Clarita, Transportation for the Northern Corridor, and took Mr. Behan, Mr. Purte went down to that. And it's good to collaborate with our partners and be able to work together for what benefits the region. And today, Hispanic Chamber Luncheon, there with Councilman Bishop. So, lots of stuff, ladies and gentlemen, this community is hopping and it takes five of us to try to keep up with everything. It's not easy to do. There was a time I could do the whole Antelope Valley, and I can't, I have trouble just doing Palmdale now.
And we have to pick and choose our events.
Exactly. But the point is to be, to be out there. I think that the community needs to see us and that's part of elected life, it's more than just joining to the meetings. All right. That takes care of our reports. How about City Council Request for New Agenda Items? This is item 12 on our agenda. Anybody have some thoughts?
Juan and I had already discussed that we were going to have a workshop for the park maintenance fees, and I also wanted to see if we can get an update or a workshop regarding the airports, so that we can be caught up on what's happening with that and some of those, some movement.
The airport?
The airport, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, then let's do this.
Also, Juan, I had discussed how this also just is workshop.
Why don't we get a, well, let me do this, let me adjourn the successor agency to June 5th, 2018, 7 o'clock, in the East Chimbolee Cultural Center. And then we have item 13 on our City Council agenda. This is a public comment for anybody who wants to comment in closed session. We're getting ready to go into closed session. Yes, ma'am? If I can just get your name, please?
Joanne Bernard. Item number 14.2 for closed session, I have some concerns. This is in regards to the sale of a property on Sierra Highway Q11, is a closed session item. However, on Mr. Ledford's Facebook page, there was a comment by Cynthia Yar, states, Jen, I'm not sure how or why I missed you at the Yard House, I have some questions about my property I have listed on the corner of Sierra Highway Q12. I need to be able to talk to my seller so I can make an informed decision. That's right next door to this closed session item. Comment was, PM your phone number and we can talk, it's easier than texting, by Mr. Ledford. Now, my understanding things that happen in closed session aren't, should be discussed outside of closed session. This sounds, maybe the citizen is all it can be, but it sounds very bad that this is happening on a Facebook page asking, hey, come talk to me about my property right next to this close-door property, because I need to be able to know what's on my sellers. This is real estate, you should try to have that conversation. It doesn't look good.
What else? Anybody else? All right. Well, with that, then let's now go to item 14, Presentation by the City Attorney.
Mayor Ledford, members of the council, just the two items that are listed on the agenda will be discussed in closed session, there's no additional items.
Very good. All right, with that, I'm going to recess to closed session.